Since it's 6:51, I will get us started on our Diversity Equity Inclusion Committing Meeting. And present tonight is Dr. Irvin and Dr. Hackett and myself and Dr. Davis. So on our agenda this evening, we have updates on District DEI Goals. Under that is Administrative and Professional Development, DEI Initiatives, District Action Plan, and then Questions and Comments from Residents. And so I will give this over to you, Dr. Irvin.
Thank you. Mr. Stingle, if you could put up our slide presentation, please. I'm going to talk about the first DEI Goals update. This is an administrative goal in terms of the creation of a DEI Dashboard. And as I think the Board members know, I have been out of the office for an extended period due to death in the family. And so while we, in theory, have this thing pretty well planned out, our mock-up is pretty rough. When I met with Ms. James, our Communication Specialist, we had talked about whether or not it made sense to spend some time actually doing some images that would represent what we wanted to do, or was the time better spent in building things out on the website. So rather than take the time to make pictorial sort of plans, we opted to keep it simple. I want to show you what we have as kind of the layout for it and talk a little bit on each of the slides about what we imagine going there. And then if I have your approval, we will upload all the data into it. One of the things with the data is since we're pulling from a number of different sources, you know, for example, just some of the demographic data, we'll make our own graphs. We'll look at some things that were part of student achievement and some of the other like data systems that we use, create reports that don't look the same. So what we'd like to do is translate those all into new graphs and tables so that there's a uniform look to the whole site, you know what I mean? Rather than graphs that look one way and another way because this one came from PDE and this one came from SAT and whatever. We wanted it to have a cohesive look. So this is a mock-up. Chris, if you'll go to the first slide, please. So this, it's a little bit hard to see. This is kind of like the landing page, right? So we have a kind of an overview about what this would look like. And then we included the equity statement on there. And then below, you can see there's three images with buttons. And the buttons talk about three different pages that we would open from here. In addition, we want to have two other pages on here that I would talk about. And I'm not sure, we have to look at what the structural capacities are of the website. So the three buttons that we have are demographic, academic, and culture and climate. So when you press one, so for example, you press academic, then Mr. Stingle, go to the next slide. I'm sorry, this is demographic. Demographic first. So what we thought we would do is create kind of like a table and have demographic data in the form of pie charts so that we could compare. And we have three columns because we thought would be informative to have information on our student population, then our staff population, and then for comparison, the overall community. Because one of the things that I think is, you know, for example, unique and would be important for people to see is if you look at the poverty level of the district versus the poverty level of the community, the district, so the student population has a higher level of poverty than the overall community. So that means that, you know, when you look at Mount Lebanon and see Mount Lebanon as an area, people oftentimes think of affluence. But when you boil it down to specifically families that have children, you're going to see a higher level of poverty. So if you guys are in agreement with that, then we would use those three columns. We had talked earlier about having student data and staff data, but then I thought, you know, where it's available and appropriate, we could put our community data on that as well, just, you know, where, to get that look across all three groups and see how they compared. And then in that side box, again, I apologize that it's hard to see. I'll email you guys this PowerPoint afterwards. Those are some links to the source data. So for each of these slides then, and we only did it as a demo in this one. So if anybody wanted to check our work, for example, we would have links to the sources of, you know, niche.com, for example, has some of this data. City Data Forum, or the City Data website has some. There's a Census, Mount Lebanon Community Website. So we would have on those same pages also, you know, additional source data so that it would be easy for people to see that. And that would be consistent across all three of these pages. So do you have any questions about demographic data?
From what I can see, I'll have to look at it up close. I would agree, I'd like to see the community data. Dr. Hackett?
Yeah, I like that. I like that addition as well.
Okay. So, and just as a reminder, there will be certain things that we will not have available data on, so we can look at things like ethnicity, gender, even for some in the community. And for the teachers, we could look at education level, for example, that we might, we wouldn't have that for students, obviously.
Right.
Their education level is whatever grade there's in. Average ages and things like that would be things that you could look at the faculty and compare to the community. But things like LGBTQ status and things like that are not. Economics are, though. You know, the economic piece is available. So there'll be, there might be some blanks on that table where we would put data not available. But wherever we can have data, particularly on the students, we'll make sure that we have that. And then again, similar data for the teachers where available and the community. All righty? Okay. Next slide, please, Mr. Stingle. So then this is the achievement data. And basically, we're going to pull these kinds of charts, as I said, out of the Student Outcomes Report, which will be one of our data sources. And then we will have the graphs that are particularly disaggregated by things like gender, special needs, ethnicities, and, did I say gender? Gender, ethnicities, special needs, socioeconomic status. Those would be the big four. So we have these assessments, but then one of the other things we talked about was AP participation. Again, where possible, where we can disaggregate that. We've done that data for the task force. And I believe also for the task force, we provided data for, broken out similarly for students in special education and students in the gifted program. So we would include those things as well. So not necessarily just assessment data.
Yeah.
But certainly these, where it's available. And you may recall from the Student Outcomes Report presentation back in November, that the SAT and ACT, a lot of our data is self-reported. But PSSAs, it's not AP data that we would be pulling from our own student management system. So we wouldn't be looking necessarily at the scores there as we do in the Student Outcomes Report, but we would be looking at participation.
Okay.
So it'd be like, how many students? And then how many students male, female? How many students by ethnicity? How many students by socioeconomic status? And those kinds of things would be able to provide. That data is already readily available to us. But again, even if you remember from the SOAR, the PSS data in that report, we just basically took those graphs that were available from PDE. So they had, if you remember, there were horizontal bars that went red, yellow, green. We would actually just do bar graphs with the level of achievement again, so that it's comparable, which is why we wanted, before we started creating all these new tables, to make sure these, that you were in agreement with that. I envisioned it, looking at some other ones, that, you know, you look at that, here's the ethnicity data for the PSSAs, here's the ethnicity data for the SATs, here's the ethnicity for the PS. So you can just go down each one and they look the same instead of trying to draw conclusions across. You know, blue means this on this graph, green means the same, you know? It just seemed like it would be problematic and messy.
Right.
Any questions on achievement or any other areas besides? So we would have the assessments, and then we would have participation in special programs.
So I guess for achievement, yes. So participation in special programs. So I was wondering, how would we include our students from Parkway and Pathfinder into the achievements reports? Because I know they're doing different outcomes.
Well, Parkway students are enrolled, pardon me?
The Nocti?
Yeah, then we could include like the Nocti for the Parkway students.
That's good.
And, but then also, if there's, you know, if there's a Parkway student who is in special education, they appear on there. If there is a, if they are in, you know, taking the PSSAs, you know, their scores are included as part of that. But I mean, I don't know if we can disaggregate like PSSA results by Parkway students. I mean, we would probably have to do that by hand. I don't know how possible that, we'll have to take a look at that. So, anything else?
You mentioned links to five pages, but three for now. What were the other two? So demographic, academic?
And then there's one more.
Culture and climate?
Yeah, and then I'll show you those last two.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay. So if you don't have any other questions on achievement, Mr. Stingle, we can go to the next slide. This one is going to look very similarly. This is climate and culture. So we are going to use our past survey results. That will be aggregate data, it's like so put together for K to 12, since all grade levels are taking it, but not, so we'll disaggregate it in other ways, but we don't want to put that up there like high school. I mean, we could do elementary, secondary, I think. We'll talk about that. The capabilities for this, this is a newer assessment for us. We piloted it at the end of last year. And then, so we've given it exactly twice. Or I'm pretty familiar with what the possibilities are. But again, this, when we go in, it's an online system, so the graphs are all in there. So we're going to want to pull that data out, put it into Excel, and create new graphs so that they fall in line. But these talk about, that talks a lot about like comfortableness at school, how they feel about their own abilities to learn, do they feel that their teachers are kind to them, and those kinds of things. So I think for the culture, climate thing, and again, I believe because we have all of our student data in there, that can be disaggregated.
Okay.
Okay? And then, you know, you're familiar with the school climate survey that we've given in the past. I don't believe we haven't administered that again for this year. We can put up last year's. We continue to work on ways to increase student participation on that. But then the other thing is that that is kind of an issue with the tool that we're using. Are we still using the same tool? Is that it's limited in the kind of reports that it gives us. So at least for this year, again, unless we would make a change, they kind of, they don't give you raw data. They say, here is, here is what is available. So, but again, it's useful. I think the biggest shortcoming that we've had with the climate survey over time has been that we were making it like doing your own time, and so we were not getting the level of participation that I think we would like in order to really be able to draw good, strong conclusions from that data. So, you know, we'll continue to work on that. And then I am, you know, always up for other information on here. We could start looking at some discipline data here. I would, you know, as we're moving through, I think one of the decisions needs to be in terms of how static is this dashboard? Is this something that we update every year? Do we update it every semester? Because that kind of stuff is changing, right? So, and we had this conversation earlier.
Yeah, I think we decided on quarterly.
Quarterly?
Is that correct, Dr. Hackett?
Yeah.
So, right. So that will be, so we'll have to think about the format in which we put that on there. That might be, Mrs. James, we talked about this, what was going to be able to, you know, like SATs, PSSAs, those are once a year. That's going to remain pretty static. But we might want to use a system for that that looks more like the COVID Dashboard so that it can be updated and then those numbers feed in. So that might take a little bit of a different look.
Yeah.
But certainly that stuff is available as well. I should have added discipline and I just forgot. So, so that's the stuff that would live in that area. Any other questions or other items you'd like to see under climate and culture?
I guess I know, since we've had parents coming to speak at the past few meetings about issues with bullying, how would we incorporate some of that information that's coming in into our discipline data?
Sure. So we have a number of different ways. One of the things that we worked on this summer as part of this, these efforts, is to develop cohesiveness from K to 12 in terms of discipline reporting. So we were using some different tools in Power School by levels where that was being put. And I think there was some customization or personalization of codes and things. So like, for example, I think one of the middle schools was using a code that nobody else was using. And so it made it hard to compare. So we had a team of principals work on that, come up with a uniform set of code. So one of the things that's, you know, when you think about reporting discipline, it's a little bit complex, right? Because there are incidents of discipline that are reported. And then generally, like, let's take, for example, this very rarely happens in our district, so, but it's kind of an extreme example. But say you have a fistfight, right? So you have two participants, maybe one is a victim and one is a perpetrator, and we know that's unknown, right? But then, you know, sometimes we have something that's like a theft, and it never gets solved. So we have a victim, but we don't necessarily have a perpetrator. The perpetrator is unknown. So how those things are coded can be different. So you have kids, you know, and I, when we use the word victim, I know we try not to use it when we're talking about bullying, but when you have the person who's experiencing the damage, you know, that individual, you know, we need to count that, right? So even if, you know, something happens to a student, you know, somebody throws something at them, they didn't see who it was, it's not caught on camera, nobody knows who that is, it doesn't negate the harm that's done to that student, even though there's not a perpetrator that's assigned to that. So we have to make sure that those things are all being recorded as well, even though there's not a consequence. Typically, the management systems that we use for this are designed to capture the perpetrator so that you have record, especially in terms of like what consequences were given, so that you can look at progressive discipline. So, you know, this child got a verbal reprimand, then they had a meeting with the principal, then they had after-school detention, you know what I mean? So we are working on making sure that we're capturing all of that information and, you know, and housing that. So, you know, that's a little bit of a learning curve, it's a different way of thinking about it. So, you know, we'll go into, the system is designed to capture that, but we just have to make sure that everybody has been doing that. And then there's also kind of crimes that are not victimless. I don't want to say that, but they're not necessarily designated as a specific victim. So a swastika on the bathroom wall, a bomb threat written, "I'm going to kill everybody" in anonymous note, you know what I mean? Where there's not even a specific victim, it's just more like a general harm to the school community. That's what makes this, that's what makes this data so difficult.
Right.
You know? And I, you know, we will need to continue to have more work and training to make sure that we are capturing this in a way that we can quantify it. Okay? If that makes sense.
Yeah, especially for the antisemitism and anti-racism.
Absolutely.
I think that's important, we capture those instances.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, so then to get to Dr. Hackett's question about the last two slides that I wanted to put on here, and again, I think it was Mrs. Fletcher who had talked about looking at PPS's dashboard, you know, their equity pages, and they have a very detailed report, but then, and then what was included on their website. So I looked there for some things that I thought also would be important for us. So, Mr. Stingle, if you could go to the next slide. This is a timeline. Now, this is not complete. And, but it goes all the way back to the, you know, the first thing on there is the formation of the task force. So this is kind of like, would be something that would also continually be updated as we've done things. So I mean, there's everything from the board presentation, the adoption of the equity statement, the Ally Michaels presentation, you know, the race thing, the development of the inclusivity calendar, you know, all of those things as we meet these kind of benchmarks or these events that we can kind of chronologically keep track of all of the things that we've done. So, you know, again, that would be probably, you know, buttons on the page also to live on that, or, you know, would live there as well, that you could go to, somebody could go down and see kind of what we did. It's kind of neat to do this.
Yeah.
I had really good information about the task force. I mean, I had it down to every meeting, what we talked about, whatever, but then it started, you know, started doing the work and not necessarily cataloging the work. So this will need a little bit more refinement. And then, again, this would be something that we would continually update.
Is there a way that we could assign a status of the items on this list, though, if they're in the planning process, if they're in progress, or if they're complete?
So that's the next one.
Is that what you're looking at for that?
That's the next one, yeah. So this is really kind of like a timeline of what is done. And then, Mr. Stingle, next slide. Now, we could, again, talk about how you'd like to do this. So these are those goals that we gave you. And what I thought we could do is in these tables, we might want to eliminate, you know, maybe we choose to eliminate a column or whatever, but that we could put like a checkbox at the end when those things are accomplished. So those kind of two pieces to be, so when you think of dashboard, I mean, I think of, I guess, I think more of like, you know, the gas gauge, you know, or whatever you're moving, we're getting there. So I tended to think more, so some of this is really like, those first three that I talked about are kind of the actual data in terms of the district's profile in DEI. And then this is a separate piece, it's actually really like, what is our progress on the goals and things that we're working on? So like a chronological timeline, and then, you know, these are kind of the, these are the, from the plan that I presented in June-ish, I think, of the summer where we talked about. And this is just one screenshot of all four. I mean, we could actually do one for each. And this is the 2223, and then there's a similar document like this for 2324, and you know, and then beyond. It could just always be updated, and then those could be, we could archive the year before, you know, click here for last year's goals on whatever. And then we could have completed in process, you know, or ongoing or whatever, and just have little checkboxes, I thought would be a good way to do that.
Okay.
But we're open to suggestions. This is why we didn't want to build it out too much until, you know, we talked this whole vision through.
No, we can look at it, definitely, and see what fits best on the site.
Yes, some of it has to do with what we can put on the site and how it can look, you know what I mean? Like, this might have to be something that is an image that we would have to update and then repost every time. But I mean, it's fine, it's, we can do whatever. And that's why that quarterly, you know, reminder, Kristin will have that on her calendar, and she can come and see me and say, okay, you know, do we need to add anything to the timeline? Do we need to check anything? Can we check anything else off the list? I mean, there's certainly a number of things on here that we have checked, which is awesome. So, and some are ongoing, like the policy review.
Right.
So, and some are not started yet. So if that, and again, I want to say that, you know, we can go ahead and get this built. I don't think it's going to take a lot of time to get it built. But then, you know, and not to put any pressure on Kristin, but we, you know, we can put this together pretty quickly, because like I said, most of this data is available, it's just maybe switching the format, entering it, you know, getting Ms. Pryor, our assistant, to put it into Excel, creating new graphs so that we have uniform graphs across. But it's not, that's not the heavy lift. And then, you know, we create the webs, we can create the webpages, they're not published. So again, some of these mock-ups are actually made, they're just not published because we don't have anything on them. And then we can have you guys take another look at them, or we can publish it, we can always unpublish it, or if you say like, oh, I think we need another page that has this, you know, we can add that.
Okay.
But I think this is a solid foundation, but open to comments.
I guess, can we also look to include, in addition to, I know, the status of things, whether it's planned in progress or complete, to include anything that's an immediate action that you feel like we need to be taking or looking at or working on now through the end of the year as far as DEI is concerned?
Can you say more about that?
So I guess if there's some, I know, especially with you retiring, if there's something that you would really like for us to review and see if there's something that we really need to push to complete as far as our DEI work goes?
Sure. Yes.
Whether that is additional professional development, or it's presentations, you know, to students or faculty, whatever the case may be. But if there's something that you feel like there's an immediate action that we need to have over the next few months?
Okay, yeah. Yeah. When I was reviewing this document, and this is, I told you that I knew that Mrs. Fletcher had been thinking about DEI because she was in this document when I was taking that screenshot, and I was thinking about some of the things that were on there that are listed for spring '23, so certainly upcoming. And one of those is, and we've already actually started it, because, for example, it's talking about engaging student groups. And we had, the high school administration met with the Black Student Union just a couple of weeks ago, Dr. Davis, and got some information from them. But then I also think that what is, you know, how do we start to bring some of those groups together? I know that they're talking about going to meet at the middle schools to try to start groups there. They've got some other stuff, they've got some activities that they're talking about doing next month for Black History Month. And one of those is starting to be outreach and building those. So I think that really what I'd like to see before the end of the year is that we really start to leverage our student power. I know we also have a group of students in the community, and I think that there are some adults that are helping advise them in the, from the LGBTQ community, and I think that that's awesome. And, you know, I think that's really, in terms of the efforts that are going to make impacts, whatever we can do to support students going forward is going to be really important. Get that set this spring so that those groups are ready to, you know, start the year off and, you know, really start to gain momentum. So I think that that, that's my number one right now, without even having to think about it, is let's get the kiddos, because their leadership is critical. And they really are, I mean, we always say, our students are amazing. Our students are amazing. So let's start giving them some chance to have their voices heard and let them start showing some of their leadership, building their leadership skills in these areas.
Yes. It's definitely very important that we make sure we have them involved. I think this would be great if you could send it to us for review.
I'll send you the PowerPoint when I, okay. Get back to my regular spot in this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So if we want to just look at the rest of the agenda, then, let me get back onto my... The next item was under B is professional development. I wanted to report that I've been invited to speak. Ms. Ross and I have both been invited to present at the PASBO Conference in March on the efforts that the district has been engaged in. And I was invited by one of the board members that Ms. Ross had met and sort of suggested our name. So they were looking for someone to speak on it. She's like, well, we can talk. And so when I met with her last Friday, Tuesday, Friday, I'm like, I have a very poor sense of time right now in my life. But anyway, we had a, we had an online meeting, and I talked a little bit about what I was going to share. So we're excited about that in terms of PD. In terms of DEI initiatives, you know, we're, right now, it's really sort of starting to gear up. There's a lot of, I think, a lot of action being planned by, especially from our student groups for Black History Month, which I'm excited about. And I was trying to think of what else. We still have the, you know, the inclusivity calendar reminders and those events. District Action Plan, you know, again, we're going through, continuing to go through policy. It does look like next month, we might have to take a break from at least some DEI policies because we're going to have to look at the health and wellness policy, I understand, I think, is what Mr. Galeco shared with me, that needs to be reviewed every three years. And he had our outreach from US DOE or somebody asking about our work on that, and that's a pretty involved policy. So we might have to put a pause on that. But other than that, I mean, I feel like things are going, oh, the other thing I wanted to say in terms of DEI initiatives, we're going to offer the Race Workshop again. We were originally scheduled to have the DEI in service last Monday, but due to circumstances, we decided to postpone it, and it ended up being very wise. So we'll do that in May. And I think that's going to be really great because it gives, we had a good plan, but I think we'll be able to actually refine it even more. Also, in terms of DEI initiatives, there's a couple of good offerings at parent university, particularly one that Ms. Arner is putting on. But I think even a lot of the mindfulness and those kinds of things are all, you know, kind of dealing with inclusivity and, you know, student wellness. So lots of good things happening in the district.
And are we looking to add Women's History Month to our DEI initiatives?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's March, right?
Yes.
Don't worry, it's on there. It's on the inclusivity calendar.
Just ask him.
It's my favorite, don't worry.
Okay. Great. Is there anything else?
I don't have anything else at this time.
Dr. Hackett, do you have any other questions?
Is the Race Workshop, is that with Dr. Jane Walsh? Is that?
She's not actually doing it.
Okay.
She is, she assisted in it. So what Dr. Walsh did is she met with our team. So when we created the course, we used her, she had some slides that we used and adapted. So she had sort of a set, a PowerPoint discussion that went with each of the three episodes. And what we did as a training, you know, this team that were the, as a presenting team, there were some administrators and some teachers as part of that. And we met with her three times each time we watched that segment, and she walked us through the discussion things. And then we asked her questions, and she gave suggestions for talking points, activities, things like that, and we watched the next one. So I actually sent her an email to thank her and tell her how great it was and what our, and I haven't heard back from her, but I think she's out of the office, too.